Good morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners Candidates Forum hosted by the Alamance Chamber. I'm Reagan Garrel, Vice President in the Chamber. It's my pleasure to welcome you all this morning. Just a few housekeeping items. Those of you attending today's forum, you are joining us with no video and no audio enabled. So sit back and enjoy this great forum. It's my pleasure to introduce Trip Durham with 2D Consultant. He will be our moderator for the Candidates Forum today. Trip?
Reagan, thank you. We come to you as part of the Alamance Chamber Advocacy Council. This Candidate Forum is one of two that have been presented in October. The earlier presentation was a forum with the Board of Education hopefuls. And so today, of course, we bring to you the Board of Commissioner candidates. And as Reagan said, we think this will be a really neat program. For our viewing audience know that everything that is about to fall out of my mouth is the same thing that we discussed with our candidates in a preparation meeting that was held earlier. Each candidate is going to receive one of three questions. Every candidate will receive the same three questions. However, it will be random by which the questions are asked. That will keep us from having the same question being answered successively by all six candidates. It allows a little bit more freedom, a little bit more creativity, and hopefully it keeps not only the audience, but also the candidates on their toes a little bit. Candidates will be given three minutes of response time for each of said questions. There will be a timer that you'll see on your video window, and that timer will be a 30-second countdown. It's for the benefit of the candidate to make sure that he or she understands what timeline they're on and how much time they have left. As I've mentioned to the candidates, if we reach that three-minute mark, even in mid-sentence, it could be that I say such and such, your time is up. I don't mean that to be rude to the candidate. I just need to make sure that we stay on time. At the end of our presentation today, each candidate will have two minutes to be able to make some type of statement. And as was mentioned during our prep call, it's sort of like an opening statement, but at the very end. So once we get into our questions and answers, we're just going to barrel right into it. This is not by any means a debate forum. This is a get-to-know-me-further forum. It's public information. This is a nonpartisan approach. The Advocacy Council created the three questions, knowing that both sides will have some type of perspective. And I'm compelled to let you know, as a moderator, I am registered as an independent, so I don't swing to either side either. Now, what we think is going to be interesting about this and the randomness by which the questions are asked, I have not had any pre-prescribed thought about how it is I'm going to start, who it is I am going to ask the first question to, or what the first question is going to be. In all my years of facilitating and moderating, I find that it's best to read the room, get a feel for what's going on in the environment, and go from there. So Reagan, before I hyperventilate, so I can take one final breath, did I leave anything out?
Yes, sir. We are good to go.
So with that, and in reading the room as promised, the first question will go to Kristin Powers. Kristin, what elements of county government would you prioritize in determining tax rate?
Yes, thank you for that. So I think, you know, one thing when I started my campaign is that we did a community listening session, because we believe that people who are most proximate to the problems also know the best solutions. And what we heard from that community listening session was some of the top issues that came out were education, school buildings, the environment, and our economy. So one thing as a county commissioner that I would want to prioritize is the state of our school buildings. And I know in a pandemic, that seems kind of odd. Our kid's going to be in school. You know, we've made different changes through that. And ultimately, I think this is a great time to think about, are our kids going to safe and healthy school buildings, as well as our teachers and our staff, where they spend the majority of their day? So in terms of funding, I want to look at what we're doing for our school infrastructure. Also want to make sure that in terms of where we're spending our money in social services and making sure that the people who are most marginalized, who've been historically left behind, are receiving the best services and they're accessible. That's a big thing on my campaign, is whatever we do, making sure our county services are as accessible as possible, and assessing the needs based on that accessibility. So, you know, as we have different iterations, start on the Board of Commissioners in the new year, making sure that we have discussions that include the community on what are your tax priorities? Where do you want your tax dollars spent? Where are the gaps? And how can we fill them collectively? Thank you.
Kristin, thank you. And one of the things that I negated to say is that the candidates don't need to use all three minutes. If they stop shy, that's fine as well. So question to Dreama Caldwell. Dreama, what are your thoughts on land use planning?
Hi. So I think land use planning, we should, I've participated in some of the things that have went on where the county has allowed residents to speak about land use planning. And I think that that is the approach that we should take, that we should allow residents to put their input in, and let's hear what kind of county that they'd like to have, and make that a part of our land use plan. And so that we are, we are kind of like challenged in this COVID thing, but there are things that I've seen creative. The county's been creative with using Zooms. The county's been creative for using face-to-face meetings and surveys. And so we should continue with that, with land use, making sure that we are prioritizing things that are important to us, you know, palm land preservation, making sure that there are things for use. And so that's what I think we should just continue, just listening to the people and what their needs are.
Dreama, thank you. John Paisley Jr., the question, what elements of county government would you prioritize in determining tax rate? John, you'll need to unmute if you would, please. Take your time. You're fine. There we go.
All right. Thank you. I think we have a number of areas that we had. One, the primary emphasis should be safety of all citizens, regardless of whether they live in the county, the city, it doesn't matter. I think that's number one, in particular with COVID-19. I think that's a major emphasis. In fact, I think that's the number one priority coming up for the brand-new municipal plan on December the 7th of this year. We've got to allow resources for the COVID-19. We also have to promote our schools and make sure they're ready. Law enforcement, that's critical, that we have adequate funding for law enforcement. I think those are the biggest areas. We can cut back. Every May and June, the current board will have meetings with each and every department and other agencies outside of the department or the county itself, within the county, to determine our budget. I was a county commissioner back in 2014 and went through all those sessions and attended each and every one. I think I was the only county commissioner at the time to attend every single meeting. We have to pay attention, as Dreama indicated earlier, to each and every citizen, and make sure that our allocations are equitable, but at the same time prioritized to protect all of our citizens and the different departments. Again, COVID-19 is major. That hopefully will improve as we continue through the year and through next year. And hopefully with a vaccine and things of that sort, it'll be a minority issue in the upcoming future. But at the same time, we have to be prepared, and I think our budget will emphasize that element. Thank you.
John, thank you. Bill Lashley, in your role as a county commissioner, how will you lead our citizens during this and other episodes of social unrest in our community?
Thank you, Trip. Well, that's a very good question. I think you have to do is you have to let everyone know that we are all free and we all believe in liberty. I believe if, you know, I've had, I've been fortunate enough to live across the country and live in certain cities in which the city was not exactly to my political liking. And I realized that if I want to live in a free country, I have to be tolerant of others, respect others' opinion. And I think that's what we need to do in this particular situation is to let everyone realize that we are all Americans. We all believe in freedom and liberty. Each and every one of us have to have the ability to be able to express ourselves. One of the most important things in our constitution is the First Amendment. It is our right as citizens to not only practice our free exercise of religion, but be able to express our opinions to others without retribution, without having to worry about someone doing something to you. So in this particular situation, I think we have to be good listeners. I think if you, you know, like my mother said, if you keep your mouth shut and listen, you will learn something. And I believe in this situation, I think it's very similar. I think we have to look at both sides. We have to listen to each other. We can't scream at each other, and we have to be respectful and dignified of each other. And that's one of the things I'm proud to be associated with this group, is each and every one of the candidates, they express their opinions vigorously, and they do it in a very dignified and diplomatic way. And I think it's a, this particular group of folks could actually be an example of people across the county, of what people can do when they come together and have respect for each other. So I think in this particular situations, we have to be good listeners, and we have to respect each and every person's opinion. So therefore, we may be able to learn something and go forward and have a county and a group of citizens who respect one another. You know, we're all neighbors of each other, and we need to respect each other. Thank you.
Bill, thank you. Bob Byrd, what are your thoughts on land use planning? Bob, if you would, mute. There we go. Technology, right, folks? Everybody's got a different device, too. So the buttons are in different places. We do know that Bob's microphone worked earlier, because we all met prior to this. There we go, Bob.
Yeah, it wasn't responding because a little message came up. All right. So I don't think we've done a very good job in this community, countywide, for land use planning. And, you know, as a result, we have this proposed stone quarry in Snow Camp that could really upset the quality of life in southern Alamance. And so, and then you think about the mega sites that are being produced in neighboring counties down in Chatham County, Randolph County, and Guilford County. Those counties are coming together for these two mega sites that is likely to create a lot of spin-off jobs and really put a lot of demand for more businesses and industries coming to Alamance County. So I really think it behooves all of us to think about those things and do it in a way that protects property owners' rights and property owner values, and that protects our environment and our natural resources. You know, this community has a lot of waterways and trails and parks that really help to define who we are. And we have to really protect those for future generations. And then you think about our farmland. I mean, once a farm is gone, it's gone forever. And so I think, you know, and I've spoken to a lot of farmers when I was commissioner and since, and talked to people at the Farm Bureau, and they're really concerned. And I think we all should be concerned about the loss of our farms. They're so important to our economy and our quality of life. So I'm really in favor of going through a process of, I think it's time to really look into countywide zoning. And we should get the community together and with all the stakeholders. And I really feel like this can be done in a way, you know, there are a lot of people that don't want, they want to be able to do with what they want to on their property and to sell it to a developer if they need to. And so maybe there are clusters of those, and that can happen. But then other groups will want to have more restrictions to protect their properties and their property values and protect the natural resources and our environment. So I think it's time to really explore that.
Bob, thank you. Pam, what elements of county government would you prioritize in determining tax rate?
Well, being on the Board of Education, of course, my first thing is going to be schools and the maintenance of schools and the possible bills like we're looking at now. And it's one thing I've learned from being in schools and going on site and being nosy about them, is if I look up and I see it looks like a leak in the roof, it did not start there. It's probably two miles up the street. So you have to jump on stuff really quickly whenever something comes up. Work orders can't be postponed and things like that. You have to move, or it's going to cost you so much money later. And of course, I'm a big veteran, so I think that's probably one of the most neglected areas of our county. We really need to focus on the veterans for what they focused on for us to keep us so free in this great country. They deserve expanded services. And I'm also a big law enforcement. I want law enforcement to be healthy, and I want it to be strong, because there's no one in this county should ever feel like they're not safe. And communications should always be open, and that's just a given. It really is. That works better. And the one thing with me is parks and recreations. I think that's another section of our county budget that could really be looked at a little bit closer, because healthy lifestyles create healthy outcomes, outcomes, rather. And I just think the more we're doing outside and better and having children involved, the better our outcomes are going to be. And that relates to safety. That relates to schools and everything. So, thanks.
Thank you, Pam. John, in your role as a county commissioner, how will you lead our citizens during this and other episodes of social unrest in our community? And again, John, we've got the mute button, please.
We have got to get along better in this county. I grew up in a small community called McLeansville. It's about halfway between Greensboro and Burlington. So about half the time I would go to Burlington, half the time I would go to Greensboro. But in McLeansville, it's a very, very small community, raising tobacco, things of that sort. If we didn't get along, we didn't survive. Blacks, whites, it didn't matter. Everybody worked together. There is absolutely no reason that we can't do that now. I've met with a number of people of all colors and all races and all religions in my 46 years of practicing law. I've represented all of those separate individuals. Race, creed, religion should not matter. It should matter that we're all striving to better this county. And I feel like I can do that and pull people together. I feel like when I was commissioner in 2014, that I helped do that. I think things such as the monument and so forth are issues, but they should be minor issues comparatively to everyone getting together, working together, living together. Guys, we all have one single creator, and we ought to act like it. Thank you.
John, thank you. Dreama, what elements of county government would you prioritize when determining tax rate?
I am, I am a proud graduate of Alamance Burlington School Systems, and so I think education and fully funding education. But I'm also a graduate of Alamance Community College. And so when we talk about education, we need to also include Alamance Community College, because we know not every child will go and get an undergraduate degree. And some children will attend community colleges. And so we need to promote trades that actually make those students be a part of our county once they finish school. The other thing is that I've had lived experience with DSS and the Health Department and WIC programs. And with 13% of our county currently in poverty, those things are important. And so in the middle of a pandemic, we need to be fully funding our Health Department. Those people at the Health Department have done a great job throughout this pandemic, keeping us informed. And so making sure that those services are included as well.
Thank you, Dreama. Kristin, your thoughts of land use planning?
Yes. So I think the county, the planning department, I know, has a big responsibility in there. Probably feel like they're understaffed at times. But I think the land use plan, the community input, has been really impressive, whether it's the surveys I attended out at the Eli Whitney Community Center the other day, the displays they've had on the progress on their land use plan. And one of the things that stood out was this maintenance of farmland and rural character in Alamance County. There, as folks have said before me, the investment in rural areas of farms is quite important. But I also think, and I think Bob mentioned this, also one of the critical things thinking about land use planning is the introduction of businesses and industry, and also the exploitation that may come with that. So Bob mentioned the Snow Camp mine. That is something I've heard a lot, being in the southern part of the county, as a major concern. But it can also happen in more urban areas, more concentrated areas of businesses coming in that may not have the best interests of Alamance County residents at heart. And so as commissioners, I think it's important, if elected, that we also create a plan that makes sure that whenever we're making decisions of what is built or who enters the county in terms of businesses, that we are making sure it works as like a puzzle piece. I mean, we're all parts of different communities and neighborhoods and have different interests, and how is this puzzle going to fit together? So I would like to see a comprehensive plan that allows flexibility and allows us to grow and change with the times, but also recognize communities that are more vulnerable, like farming community or like communities, some of the more urban areas as well, who may not typically be thought of in land use planning, but have just as much, say, an impact when their backyard floods from a creek down in Burlington, like we've seen when it rains heavy, and making sure those are addressed as well comprehensively, along with the municipalities that make those decisions, too. Thank you.
Kristin, thank you. And at risk of invoking the sportscasters jinx, we are halfway through our session, and we have not seen the clock one time. And so in a Candidates Forum, I think that's pretty impressive. So I appreciate everybody being concise with their thoughts. Bob, back to you and your role as a county commissioner, how would you lead our citizens during this and other times of social unrest in our community?
Well, I think we have to talk about the root cause of the social unrest that we have right now. And it really is a product of what I would say systemic racism. We have, you know, the killings and the murders of people of color, especially black people, like the George Floyd murder, and others' acts of violence towards blacks is really has what launched or stimulated all of the protests and the unrest that we're seeing right now. As a student of racial equity, over the past four years, I've become, it's been transformational for me, what I've learned about race and racism, and especially systemic racism, and how it manifests in our society in such profound ways today. I mean, you look at every system that we have, whether it's healthcare, criminal justice, law enforcement, finance, there are huge disparities between white people and people of color. And it didn't just happen. I mean, I think that we learned that our system from hundreds of years ago in this country was set up for that result to kind of happen. So I think that it's really necessary for us to make progress on the social unrest that we have. We've got to, we, white people in particular, need to listen to our black neighbors and friends and colleagues. And I've tried to do that. And I think that, because, you know, if we don't understand the black experience and get close to it, particularly as white people, by interfacing with black people and being in roundtable discussions and reading articles and watching documentaries and going to these racial equity trainings, we will never understand what systemic racism looks like, how it came about. And if we don't understand that, then we'll never be able to dismantle it and rid ourselves of the social unrest altogether. I mean, it's all a matter of equity, and we need to reduce this huge wealth gap of income and wealth that we have between white people and black people. So I mean, there are no easy answers, but it starts with education, going to trainings, reading, and so on.
Bob, thank you. Bill, what elements of county government would you prioritize in determining the tax rate?
Well, the tax rate is pretty much set. We have, we have a few things of county government. The school system is extremely important. It takes one at every $3 that we get from the taxpayers. And I just think that we have to concentrate on what our responsibilities are. Our responsibilities for the schools are to maintain and to, and take care of the operations of the schools, as well as the teacher's supplement. I believe at this particular time, COVID has given the school system an opportunity to take care of the maintenance issues that Ms. Thompson was talking about. Since the children haven't been in the schools, the maintenance department for the school system should be taking care of those issues that seems that everyone seems to point to as reasons for increasing the school budget. I think another important aspect is business development, bringing businesses into our county to provide jobs and services for our citizens. But when I talk about business development, I'm not talking about incentives, using taxpayers' dollars for that purpose. I believe that we, as our tax rate, can be a comparative advantage to other tax, high-tax counties around us. And I believe that every business looks at their bottom line. They are not going to go to another county because the taxes are higher. They're going to look at our county because the taxes are manageable, easier to deal with when it comes to taking care of your bottom line. Another important aspect of county government is law enforcement. We need to be clear. If we do not have a safe community, we do not have a safe place for our businesses. We do not have safe places for our kids to go to school. And we don't have safe places for individuals just to be safe. And that's one of the important things. That's one of the things that government is responsible for, is making our communities safe. We need to concentrate on that. One of my favorite parts of county government is parks and recreation. We actually have a great parks and recreation department. They do a superb job. I enjoy the things that they have decided. And I actually also think that, like Dreama said, Health Department has done a superb job in this particular COVID situation. And I'm proud of our Health Department compared to other counties around us. I think they've done a superb job. Thank you.
Bill, thank you. Pam, in your role as a county commissioner, how will you lead our citizens during this and other episodes of social unrest in our community?
Well, I'm glad you asked me that. I look at everything through the eyes of church. Years ago, I was Sunday School Director at my church, and we outfitted our building. And the last thing we outfitted was the carpet. Oh, my gosh, I'm convinced if, it got me ready for politics, because if you can change carpet in a Baptist church, you can do anything. Because you saw the power struggles of everybody. You know, my great-great-grandfather gave that carpet. Well, it's got two strings. We've got to do something. And what that really results in is fear. And along with fear, their main sister is changed. we gotta do something. And what that really results in is fear. And along with fear, their main sister is change. And I see that in all of this. And it's how we handle it. As a Board of Education member, I've always been the one, we all get different calls, but mine was always about safety and my kids getting bullied. I've talked to everybody, nothing's happening. So I would get the right person to go with me to the school to have a conversation. I'm real face to face. I love Sunday School. It's small groups. That's where you do your most learning. And I'm a real on-site person. I don't think as a public servant that I'm going to be sitting in some office and next. That's not how it works, because those people, the citizens of, like the families of our schools, the citizens of this county, that's my boss. That will be all of our bosses. And I really respect that, because if they entrust us to be their leader, we have to do this right, and we have to have balance. And I think one of the hardest things I've learned and the best things from restorative justice is, everybody needs to, at all times, have a mirror in their pocketbook or their pocket. Because whenever we go to open our mouth, we need to look in that mirror to make sure that what we're saying, we can't say to ourselves. Because ownership of a problem requires both sides. And that's just maturity. That's also empathy and kindness. There is good in everybody. You'll never make me believe any difference. They just sometimes have forgotten that. And on occasion, we all have. But I think the heart speaks so much louder than words, but many times we, we just see the words. So I know people are good. I know they're good. I always say Moses was a hot mess, and he didn't get really busy until his eighties. So don't tell me people can't get along. I believe in people. I think everybody's savable if that's what they want. But conflict is, sometimes it's the person beside you that's making you really think the conflict is better and it's not. But looking at yourself and asking yourself, what can I do better? You know, do I really want this for the big picture? It just takes a lot of maturity. That's, that's got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. And folks, if I'm looking at my grid correctly, each of our candidates has one question remaining, and then afterward, we'll offer everyone a two-minute closing statement. So Bob Byrd, what elements of county government would you prioritize in determining tax rate?
Well, I want to go with education. That's the reason I ran for office to begin with in 2014 and continue to run, because there's nothing more important than creating that foundation for a prosperous community. And it's through public education. And if we don't have that strong foundation, like, you know, building, we're going to have some of the walls and the ceilings to crack and crumble. And, and we're going to, not going to be as strong of a community. So that, that's the number one issue for me. But I will say, you know, I've been through a lot of budgets. I've been through four county government budgets and probably 35 budgets at Alamance Regional Medical Center, which by the way, has a budget, at least when I was there, twice as large as the counties. And I know it, it's tough to budget, because you know, as Bill has mentioned, and others, that there are a lot of important functions in county government. I mean, think about the EMTs that come and save us. We want to have a strong EMS department. And think about the public libraries, which is part of education and, and, and the, the Board of Elections Office. I mean, that's fundamental to our democracy. So there's a lot of important function. And the Health Department that was mentioned. I was on the North Carolina local Health Department Accreditation Board. And I can tell you from that experience that our Health Department is second to none in this, in this state. But, so it's a matter of balancing and, and investing. So I want to prioritize things that really are considered an investment. And that's what public education is. And we get a return on that investment by having more kids be successful in life, because they had a really good education. That would eliminate more jail cells and would eliminate social workers at DSS maybe, and people would probably be healthier. So there's a lot of spinoffs by investing in education. And I guess, I guess that's mostly it. With, with respect to tax, I just want to say, you know, Bill mentioned, companies come here because of our low tax rates. Well, I, I don't know if that's always true, because I mean, companies settle and move to Wake County and Orange County and other counties that have much greater tax rates than we do. So I think it kind of depends. I think companies want to come to a community that's going to be investing in itself. And with respect to tax rates, I mean, our property tax rate right now is probably about at the median. There's only one county that touches us that has a lower property tax rate than we do. And I don't ever want to raise tax rates unless it's absolutely necessary. So when, if, when I, when I think about tax rates, I got to make sure that, okay, have we exhausted all the potential tax cuts, or, I mean, expense cuts in our budget? And have we exhausted all the other opportunities for revenue to our budget before I would consider a tax rate increase? And, and I'm going to make sure that our tax rate is comparable and comparable to similar counties around us. So thank you.
Bob, thank you. Dreama, in your role as a county commissioner, how would you lead our citizens during this and other episodes of social unrest in our community?
All right. So one of my pet peeves, I've been in this county my whole life, and I'm just now running for office, is politicians used to come into my community when it was time to run for office, and then you didn't see them anymore until it was time to run for office. And so with that being a pet peeve of mine, I thought I would do things differently as a commissioner. I would stay in connection with the people. I'm coming out of a grassroots background. I believe in grassroots. I believe in people power. And I believe that who better to decide what is best for their community than the people who live in that community? So I would remain open to talking and speaking with people and caring about people, but all people, even people who may believe differently than I do. I would continue to talk with them, continue to be present at community functions that are in the community as my schedule and time allowed, because that's an opportunity to be connected with people. One of the things that I've learned during this, on the campaign trail, is there are lots of voices out there. People that have felt like they have been unheard. There are people who felt like, maybe they're not part of this community and they would like to be. And so just listening and emphatically listening to people, not just listening to defend a standpoint, but listening to their points, and remaining transparent and being available by email and phone calls, and just staying in contact with people and listening to people. Kind of like where we got to with this Snow Camp mine, listening to people. That, that's a big part of that, this issue, is listening to that community. So that's definitely what I would plan to do. Thanks.
Dreama, thank you. John Paisley, what are your thoughts on land use planning?
I should be unmuted this time. Thank you. I think first off, the situation in Snow Camp, the fact that the county commissioners were not in on the front end of that is deplorable. That would require a state law change. And I think that we have most state senators and representatives on the state level that can help us make that change. But the county commissioners should, should have been on the front end of that, as opposed to the catch-up end of, of that situation. We need to protect our farmland. Farms, as I think Bob and Bill both mentioned earlier, you need to be protected. We need to have our farmers use that for that. You have the land use program that's very, very effective in Alamance County, and that can help do that, solve that problem. Also with our tax department, obviously you can put land in farm use as opposed to some other alternative, which would lower your property taxes. There are all kinds of things that can be done to help farmers. At the same time, we must keep land open for development. We've got to bring in more industry, more, all types of industry, not just manufacturing, but computer tech and all kinds of things of that sort. So we have to have blocks of land that can be used for those purposes. I'm not a proponent of countywide zoning, but I think we have a number of programs already in place that help that without the countywide zoning. I think people should be able to have their own, own ideas on how to use their property, whether to keep it or sell it, keep it in the family, things of that sort. But therefore, not for countywide zoning, but at the same time, we have many, many programs that already promote things of that sort. We have, through my many travels, both at the governmental level, through my law office, and 46 years of practicing law, through my hot air ballooning and traveling all over the country, I've seen many, many areas that have developed land use programs without countywide zoning, but through developing education and programs for all sorts of people, from farming to industrial to whatever. And ACC and Elon University are all resources that we should be able to tie together and be able to tie that in with the community, and therefore train our future employees for those types of industry and businesses. I had someone call this week on farming and planning. We, through ACC, could develop a business plan and agricultural plan for our farmers. Thank you so much.
John, thank you. Kristin Powers, in your role as a county commissioner, how would you lead our citizens during this and other episodes of social unrest in our community?
Yeah. So I, I think with a lot of the unrest or protest, there's, there's people behind it who feel unheard or unseen. And so I think getting to the root of why those people feel unheard or unseen is crucial. And, and part of that is, and I think Dreama alluded to this, a lot of times, in both nonprofits, businesses, county government, we expect people to come to us with their problems or with their solutions. And often, there are so many barriers or fears, or even just talking to someone about these things might be intimidating or scary, or they may not know how people react. So I think it is of the utmost importance that people go, elected officials go into communities. And, you know, I mean, right now, COVID has messed up canvassing in some ways, but canvassing is not just for candidates. I think it's even more important for elected officials. And it can't just be when things get to the peak, when things get, you know, boil over, it has to be a continued maintenance of relationship building over time. Lately, and in the past, I've received, I receive a lot of messages that get really heated on social media. And often I say, you know, we, I think this is a better conversation to have pre-COVID in person or on the phone, because, you know, you can get a little bit of keyboard courage sometimes and say things you may not mean, or wouldn't say to someone in person. And so for me, it's really important to have those conversations where you can see one another and see the humanity in each other. And that was, that would be something, well, something I've already done and would continue to do. And I've been able, based on that, to build relationships with people I would have never had thought, based on the perceived partisan divide in our community and nation, I would be able to build. So again, I think it's important to understand why are people upset, where maybe is the gap in communication, or the gap in being heard or being seen, and make sure that we feel those as representatives and public servants of our community. Thank you.
Kristin, thank you. Bill, what are your thoughts on land use planning?
Well, land use planning is extremely important. I'm, I'm not in favor of countywide zoning. I don't believe that the county should be mandating to citizens what they should do with their land. I'm a big proponent of, let's work with the community and, and the residents to, to manage the countywide zoning issue. I think the residents, it's important that the residents have an input and a say in what goes on with their property. I, I do believe that you have to be careful that our farmland is protected. Now, I understand that we want our county to grow, but we need to make sure that our farmland is protected. I mean, at the end of the day, we, we have to feed ourselves, so to speak. I actually think that if the citizens had the opportunity, like someone mentioned earlier, the quarry in Snow Camp was, was not a success. I don't think there's much you can point to that, that shows it to be a success, because the residents of that community are up in arms. And like Mr. Paisley said, it appears that, that the county is playing catch-up. And I think that the only way that that can be alleviated is to a state law. I do believe that we should, you know, make development for our county to be, we want to make our county to look nice. And we want our residents to be able to enjoy the environment that's in their backyard. And I think that if we use the ideas of management and not mandate, I do believe that we will, we, we can sit down, we can solve our, our issues, but I would like to work with the residents so they can have a say in what goes on in their backyard, and that they can have a say in, in the environment that, that's, that's with them. Thank you.
Thank you. And Pam, you get the last question. And as I ask it, I will let you know that I'm a bit disappointed in myself, because this is actually the only back-to-back scenario by which we have the same question. What are your thoughts on land use planning?
Well, I've been really lucky to serve on this land planning development. And I've met the leaders in this part of Alamance County, and they are just, they're rock stars. And I really appreciate what they're facing. I went through rezoning with the school board. Oh my gosh. Everybody knows we need to rezone in your buildings. We need to get more room in our schools, but, and go ahead and rezone. I'm with you. Just don't come down my street. And, and that's like that, that's that change factor again. And, but we've got to do something with this county from what I've learned, because when something like a rock quarry, and, and we need those, because they produce what we need. But when it can land in the middle of Snow Camp, and everybody's like real surprised about it, and then you're watching your citizens of that area sue your county, that is the ultimate failure and a great way to like divide a family. And that's what's happened. And we are all supposed to be on the same team and work together. I met Frank Bell last year, oh my gosh, like Moses, and about the present use value of like agriculture, horticulture, and forest land. And I think we got to protect it, because being from Eli Whitney, I used to ride horses, ride mini bikes and fish every Saturday and Sunday if I wasn't playing softball. And I knew across the street from me was a dairy farm, because I knew if I just took one small breath. And when I was growing up, we had over 100 dairy farms, and now we have four. We don't make land anymore. And I hope every kid understands that you don't make milk in the back of Harris Teeter, nor do you make a roast. All of this. We can bring industry, we have to for jobs and everything like that. That is amazing. That keeps us going. But we can, if that business doesn't make it, we can re-rent that building and bring another business in. If that farm doesn't make it, we starve. And we just have to really honor that and work together. It's one thing I've learned. I don't like the idea of buffers, because the buffers I've seen are like four rose bushes and one of them's dead. A buffer to me is you can't see through it, you got to walk through it, because that gives you that privacy. And sometimes that balance will work for people when they want to come in and put a couple of different things together. So zoning, it's got to be done so right, because I've looked through that, and it's very emotional. And you've got to have your public with you to walk through this with you the whole time, because it is their land. You're making a decision, but they have every right to be part of that decision, a big part of that decision. And with the present use value that, you know, you can get some big tax cuts, like some of the guys were saying, but you got to make sure you do it right, because they'll go back on you three years and they'll get you with some penalties. And you just don't want to do that. So we just have to always be honest and honor the system. And I, I don't know, I just, that quarry has been real stuck to me, because that's in my part of the country. And I don't ever see, I don't want to see families have that to happen to them. But I want to see a quarry be successful, because we made what they produce. So it's all about balance. And if zoning brings balance, we just have to be real smart and have empathy and understanding for one another. Thanks.
Pam, thank you. And thank you to our candidates for this portion of our program. As we mentioned at the top, and even at the halfway point, we will have an opportunity now for each candidate to offer a two-minute closing statement. The clock right now is being reset to two minutes. In the meantime, some candidates have listed their contact or their public information, information inside the chat bar. So candidates, if you would like to place your information inside that chat, you can certainly do that over the course of the next 12 minutes as we are getting our wrap-up statements. Again, these will come at no particular order. They are random based on the way that I feel the room is moving right now. So the first two-minute closing statement will go to John Paisley.
And I should be unmuted. Thank you. My name is John Paisley. I've served here in Alamance County for over 46 years as attorney for many of you guys and gals out there, companies, businesses, and, and so forth. I have a business degree with a minor in accounting from Elon University, at the time Elon College, obviously. My law degree, my Juris Doctorate is from Wake Forest University. I've enjoyed running a business here for all 46-plus years. I grew up on a tobacco farm, raising tobacco, working in my grandfather's grocery store, doing all kinds of things, meeting many, many people. And I feel like that has helped me and will help you as your county commissioner. I've been on many, many boards, both state and federal, was on the Board of Elections for like 16 years, chairman of that board for eight of those years, was on the, and chairman of the Alamance County Mental Health Board for many years, was on the statewide substance abuse board for some number of years. I've served in many different capacities, which I believe will help me make the job easier for me, but more help me make, uh, the job easier for me, but more profitable and, uh, useful for you guys. Uh, and having coached with four kids and a wife of forty-seven years, uh, softball, baseball, soccer, uh, youth basketball in the church league and so forth. Uh, yeah, uh, time management is important. I know I'm running out of time. Uh, and therefore I feel like I can work with all kinds of people, young, old, it doesn't matter. I look forward to working with you, serving you, and I would ask for your vote and support between now and November third, and particularly after November third, if I'm lucky enough to be able to serve you. Thank you.
John, thank you. Kristen Powers, two minutes.
Thank you. So currently I run a farming nonprofit in the southern part of the county with a social enterprise. And that's really helped me keep proximate to the issues around farming, local business owners, any investment that we need in terms of, like we've said many times this, this session, um, farming, but also investment in local business owners. I think also we need in Alamance County to move out of this scarcity mindset. I see a lot of people feeling like there's not enough, like we can't, um, invest in our communities the way that we want to. And I would just want to challenge everyone to really think about what, what does an Alamance County look like to you in the future? What is our vision for that? And, you know, I think collectively we see a community where we want our basic needs met. So how are we making sure children get the best education they can? People are receiving living wages so that they can, um, not only survive, but start saving for their dreams and really thriving. How can we make sure that people with different accessibility needs are catered to by our government services? Our government services don't mean much if there's a population of our community that can't access them, whether because of physical differences or, um, neurocognitive or mental health differences. So I think that's really important that we go through this exercise as a community of, uh, what do we want here and how can we achieve it? Um, and I think that's something we can do. Again, like my campaign started off with as a community survey and it, and not only, as I've said before, having folks come to us to tell us what they want, but going and asking in their community. If you folks want to learn more about my campaign, they can go to kristinpowers.org. You can also email me directly at info@kristinpowers.org. And I appreciate so much for the Chamber for putting us on today. Thank you.
Kristen, thank you. Bill, lastly, two minutes.
Thank you, Tripp. I really appreciate you all doing this today. The Chamber of Commerce deserves a lot of credit for putting this on. I think it's very informative for our citizens. You know, I'm a, I was born and raised in Alamance County, went to public schools here in Alamance County. And, uh, I believe that my background in finance and economics will give me a leg up when it comes to county government and dealing with budgets as, as much as I have in the past. Uh, I think one of the things that I, I believe is I think we got to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. Uh, at the end of the day, this is not our money. It's, uh, people have worked really hard to provide this for us and we need to be good stewards of that. I actually might want to, uh, bring a, a pro-business environment. You know, I think we need to continue that pro-business environment. It's important for Alamance County to be able to compete. Competition makes everyone better. I think that public safety, I'm a big proponent of law and order. If, I've said it before and I'll keep saying it again, we must have a safe place to live. We must have a safe place to go to school. We must have a safe place to, to, to do our business. At the end of the day, that's what government responsible, is responsible for. And I think that we have to just, in this, in these difficult times with COVID and social unrest, we just really need to understand, you know, once again, let's reach out to our citizens. Let's don't be that, let's don't be the person that causes the problem. Just be the person who solves problems. And that's what my job will be if I'm elected county commissioner is. I'm a big proponent of solving problems. And you can't solve problems by yourself. You need input from others to bring a different perspective, to look at things differently than you do. And I believe that that's what I am going to try to accomplish if I'm elected a county commissioner. Thank you so much for your time.
Bill, thank you. Pam Thompson, two minutes.
Well, I just want to thank everyone that actually pays attention to an election. It is so important. And I've had the most amazing eight years on the Board of Education. It has been one of the biggest blessings of my life. I have stood up for your children and their safety, physical as well as their mental wellbeing. I stand by my record. I feel that my service on the Board of Education has well-prepared me to serve as your county commissioner. I don't think you ever run for office to keep your seat. You run to make a difference. And I know in my heart I have. Just make sure you vote. We are so blessed to live in this country with the freedom to do so. I am all over Facebook promoting our school system. I'm a strong Christian. I'm always posting things positive because we really need positive right now. And my website is electpamela tyler thompson.com. And I just want to thank you all. And it's been a joy to run for office with my fellow running mates or whatever. We're like family now. And I just appreciate you all for taking a step out. You put yourself out at risk and it is not easy. And, um, just good luck to all of us. And thank you very much.
Thank you Pam. Bob Byrd, two minutes.
Well, it's a pleasure to be with you this morning and with my fellow commissioner candidates. I'm Bob Byrd, former county commissioner and a candidate again. And since arriving here decades ago, I've been passionate about Alamance County, helping to improve life here for everyone through my career at Alamance Regional Medical Center and through my extensive community service on numerous boards and committees focused on public education, health and mental health, older adults, our youth, the arts, poverty, homelessness, racial equity, transportation and more. Yet I never aspired to be a politician or an elected official until I served on the School Systems Vision Plan Committee near the end of my career. It was then that I realized I could make a difference for our schools and our youth as a commissioner. So I ran in 2014 and I won. And I'm proud of my work during my four-year term on the board, steadfastly supporting and championing our schools, voting to provide the economic incentives to bring more good career-type jobs to Alamance County, working to protect our environment and our natural resources and preserving our farmland, and bringing the stepping up initiative to Alamance County. Now, this is a national initiative designed to keep persons with mental illness from being incarcerated in county jails. So I'm running again because there's so much more work to do in these areas and more. What I bring to the table is a wealth of experience and service. My thirty-five-year career on the senior executive staff at the hospital taught me how to think strategically, how to manage large budgets and how to invest, how to work with all kinds of people and collaborate and build bridges to get things done. So I'm Bob Byrd and I am ready and excited to be your county commissioner. Once again, I ask for your vote to bring back Bob Byrd to the Alamance County Board of Commissioners. For more information, please visit my website at bobbyrd.us. Thank you very much and thanks for having this forum.
Bob, thank you. Drima Caldwell, two minutes.
All right. You guys have often heard me say that, uh, they save the best for last. So here I am. And so, um, I am a native here in Alamance County. I've heard everybody talk about their experience and their degrees. And I, I don't come with the same experience degrees, but what I do come with is lived experience here in the county that can't be taught in a classroom. Lived experience that includes homelessness, um, DSS services, public housing, and those things matter. Diversity and, and representation matter. Your government should look like the citizens and the residents that they serve. And so here I am to be a voice for those people that are in marginalized communities. I want to say to you that I see you and I hear, I hear you. And I know that many of the times you felt like you haven't been heard. And so I am running so that I could bring all of our voices to the table and so that I can ensure that Alamance is a more equitable place and a beautiful place for all of us to live in. Thank you. And thank you for this opportunity.
Drima, thank you. Folks, as we start to close things down, on a lighter note, I can tell you that when I woke up this morning, three things that I did not think I would hear during the candidates forum was hot air balloon, Moses and hot mess. So I appreciate everybody bringing their personalities into this forum. I appreciate our candidates respecting the rules that had been laid out or at least the format. And Reagan, you opened up this session, so I will say good day and hand it back to you so that you can close us out.
Thank you. On behalf of the Alamance Chamber members, Board of Directors and staff, Tripp, thank you for moderating this fantastic forum today. To the candidates, thank you for making time, sharing information with us and our viewers. Uh, this has been recorded today and the recording will be available later this week. With that, I will wish you all a fantastic day and I hope to see you all again very soon. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.